Call a meeting if you want. I'll let Councilmember Michael Proctor lead us in the pledge and the dedication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, thank you so much for this community and this council. Thank you for the members that serve and our residents that make it a great place to live. I ask for your wisdom and guidance this evening as we make decisions for the city and as we handle issues on behalf of those who elect us. And G C M A.
All right, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda that you're aware of, Ryan?
Yes, we do not need a previously anticipated executive session.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second, discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, well, citizens' comments included. Anybody would like to address the council? You have three minutes to address the council. Now, both of the citizens' comments. Okay, we'll move to item E, appointments, proclamations, and recognitions.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is item E1, appointment to planning commission. So, planning commissioners operate on a three-year term basis, and one-third of planning commissioners being reappointed each year. The mayor appoints the commissioners to office, and they are confirmed by the governing body. And Daniel Hayden is being recommended by Mayor Zimmerman to be on the planning commission. He will be replacing Joey Crowe, who stepped down from her position in April of 2022. Based on planning commissioner bylaws, the commission shall organize annually at the first regular meeting after the annual appointment of new members, which is normally first city council in December. Commissioners are appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council on a term of three calendar years on a staggered basis, with approximately one-third of the commissioners reappointed each year. This is kind of a time flow, so if he appointed him this year, he would serve for 2022, 2023, 2024, and be reappointed either at the end of 2024 or the beginning of 2025. And so, Daniel Hayden. Financially and legally, approved as a form, is recommended that the city council approve the mayor's decision to appoint Daniel Hayden to the planning commission. Daniel Hayden previously did serve on the parks board, from what I understand, and after lunch with Mayor Zimmerman and myself, we had determined that we believe Mr. Hayden served and do adequately on the planning commission, so that's just that's recommendation.
Believe me, he's all bred as credentials. I think that he'd make a good addition to the planning commission.
He was on the park board also.
So, we'll take a motion to approve the appointment.
I make a motion to approve Mr. Hayden.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Very good. We have an half consent agenda. Is there any questions on the consent agenda? If not, we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're moving into business, and we'll move on to new business. Item H1.
Honorable Mayor and City Councils, item H1, the big arm edition final plat. So, quick background, Garber LLC has submitted a final plat on behalf of the developer, Bob Armstrong. Preliminary and final plats were approved at the March 14, 2022, regular planning commission meeting. This plat is for the Big Arm Development located off of 23rd and 199th, Goddard Road. This plat is in line with the sale of the city-owned land under contract by Mr. Bob Armstrong, approved by the city council. The development is being platted for 29 duplexes, taking into account the Phillips Pipeline and one's diagonally through the property. One lot for a total of 30 is remaining for the existing church building, which has yet to be determined what purpose it will be used for. The development has restrictive covenants on it by the Heart of Kansas Southern Baptist Association, HOKSBA. HOKSBA has agreed to lift the covenants upon the sale of the land. They will receive 50% of the proceeds from the sale, or $15,000, whichever is greater. A crosslot drainage agreement has been secured with the property owner of Brentwood Apartments. So, the city council is considering approving the final plat for the Big Arm Development. Plat, once again, 30 residential lots, 29 duplexes, one undecided. It's about 7.9 gross acres, around 345,000. The approved rezoning was for R2, so it's currently resting on R2. Restrictive covenants, once again, for HOKSBA, for 50% of sale proceeds. This is the property. These are the two lots that we own that were purchased, that are under contract, I should say. The total land is being replatted. This is 23rd, Goddard Road, 199. This is the big arm edition plat.
Michael, I didn't see any drainage ponds. Was there any?
Drainage ponds, so you're not going to see an actual drainage pond. You'll see it as a reserve. So, anytime you see a reserve listed on a final plat, you can read in the platter's text what that reserve corresponds with. So, if you see, like, Reserve A, you can go to the platter's text and look in here and say, what does Reserve A respond to? But there is a retention pond proposed for this area right over here. And that retention pond, you know, I'm speaking, Garber's right behind me, so I'm speaking a little out of turn here for not being an engineer myself, and so, but they can speak in more depth on the engineering of it. But there's a retention pond right here that's going to discharge and meter water out onto the Brentwood Apartments, and that's what that crosslot drainage agreement's for, so that they can discharge water, a controlled flow of discharged water onto the adjoining lot. But, I mean, Harland, if you wanted to speak on that now, you want to. But like I said, Garber's right behind me. They can speak on it if you want, but there should be retention pond right over here, and it's under a reserve.
Not to embarrass you, but it's a detention pond.
Detention pond, sorry. See, that's why I'm not an engineer.
Not retention.
Yeah. Detention, we're detaining the water. We're not going to hold on to all of it.
Right, there you go.
We'll let some of it go. Financially and legally approved as the form, is recommended that the city council approve the final plat for the big arm edition, and as mentioned, Garber is here representing, Mr. Bob Armstrong. If you have any questions.
All right, does anybody have any questions, Mr. Armstrong?
I'm going to just comment that we kind of put them through the wringer in getting this off-site during each easement, but we thought it was important just to make sure that it wouldn't cause any problems, and they went the extra mile and got it done. And so, I want to say thank you for getting that, getting that done for the project.
Yeah, I'm Kenley. I'm with Garber. We're 1995 Midfield Road at the airport where our office is located at. Yeah, it was, as Harland said, quite the adventure. The company that owns the property is actually defunct, and so, we had to find their errors in the signs and sent multiple registered letters up to different addresses. And then, I think it might have been Brooke, who says, wait a second, I know the manager. I got her phone number. And so, we ended up calling, calling her, and she got us to James Williams, who's still, he's one of the original owners. He lives there. He's retired. He's like 85 years old. But we got to the finish line and did get the documents. We actually have, along with the crosslot drainage agreement, we also have a drainage easement across the property as well, just to really confirm the city's ability to own it, to maintain, do any work they need to do on that drainage if it was to apply. And we, he actually asked us during the process, that James Williams, he's an architect, so he had us make a couple of small changes to our design to kind of make him feel more comfortable with it. And it was a good conversation, so I was happy that Harland had us approach them, because I think the finished product is better for the interaction. But as mentioned, there is a retention pond or detention pond here. Got me saying retention, I too. But we have a detention pond here, and we'll have storm sewer that goes across and picks up the drainage on the backside of these lots. And drainage will be running along the perimeter of the property. One of the things that they requested that we put a burn here, so any water that comes through here is not going to go onto their property. They wanted to make sure that those apartments were protected from drainage, so part of our agreement was to put a burn along that property line. So, happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay. Thank you.
It is recommended that the city council approve the final plat for the big arm edition.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat for the big arm edition.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor and Council, item H2 is a splash pad manifold. Splash pad manifold is a device which the main water line runs into, and then each feature on the, and the splash pad hooks into that, the solenoids do, and that basically is the main device. Water runs in, goes to all the features. It pumps water to various parts of splash pad. It's been repaired twice this summer. The end cap broke off of it. We glued a new one on. It broke off again. We saw the piece off, and we got a new cap on there. I think it lasts through the remainder of the summer, but we thought it'd be a good idea to get one ordered up so we can install it before next summer, because last thing I want is to shut this off for the whole summer. I don't, as, as the slide says, the manifold has been shortened and capped twice. No room to repeat the repair. If it would fail, we would not be able to run the splash pad. And I, we don't know the lead time on this, but we'll get it by spring. If it were summertime, then we may not get it in the summer. The manifold would be placed and ordered through AFCO in store to the public works facility. We're not going to wait for the current manifold to fail. We're going to run it for the rest of the season. At the beginning of next season, we will install the new manifold. We can keep the old one as a backup in case, but we're going to install the new one, because we don't want to do it in the middle of summer when people are screaming at us wanting to have fun. As it says here, the splash pad is a very important attraction, and going out this custom manifold would place area out of commission for weeks or months, possibly the remainder of the summer when it broke. We do not want to do that. We're requesting spending approval of $10,780 for a new manifold. It would come from the Special Parks Recreation Fund, capital outlay, 63208600. Legal, it's approved as the form. Any questions?
Is it a plastic thing or is it metal?
It's a large Schedule 80 PVC pipe, and it's probably nearly as long as that table, maybe a little longer. Eight inches, internal diameter, and it's got basically plastic-welded attachments to it where each individual feature from the splash pads, the water line that goes into, and then it has the solenoid that runs it that goes to the wiring. So, it is a large, big, plastic piece.
Those solenoids ever go out?
We haven't had any yet. We do have replacement solenoids. They're pretty easy to change. You know, you unhook the water on both ends and put the new one in and rewire it up. So, that's pretty simple repair.
So, there's no way of getting a stainless steel one or something made up?
I have not heard anyone say they're stainless steel. We can look into it. This is from the company that, that splash pad, that, oh, that designed splash pad and built it. And so, this is the replacement part for the original part. They can look into a stainless steel, but they didn't say anything about options as far as different materials. They can look if you'd like.
Is that, is that from, like, our big Goddard waters?
No.
Just tearing it up or what?
No, I think it's just the pressure probably of the solenoids kicking on it off, probably just.
It's, it's got quite a bit of pressure. I mean, it'll hold quite a bit of pressure. And as the mayor says, if someone's kicking off it, it just, that end cap just beats on it. And if you've ever had a hammer.
Is it from sitting dry in the winter time too?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, if you've ever had a water system that gets air in it, and then when you turn the pressure on, turn the water onto it, it hammers. And if you do that on a water main, and you don't have a couple hydrants open, you'll tear everything up. So, it's possible that some type of hammering could have happened in there when it sits empty and full. I don't know, to be honest. I didn't design it, so I'm not 100% sure.
That stainless steel one's probably 20,000.
If we can get one, it may be 30.
But this only lasted how long?
This one's lasted since it has been opened. So, what, it opened in eight, 17, 18?
18.
18. And there's been a lot of cycles through it, so.
Five years.
Do you think we would get a long, longer lifespan if you got a better one?
If they make a metal and it's welded, I do believe wood, because what happened is the, the Schedule 80 is pretty thick plastic. It's pretty tough. But water does some strange things, and it gets pressurized. An option may be, if council would choose to approve this, with also guidance for me to look for a stainless steel piece. I can do that. In case it's not available, we can have this one ordered.
I didn't know if you could just take the old one out over the winter and have a weld shop make you one?
There you go.
Stainless?
Maybe. I can't say without talking to a welder, maybe.
And, and the, the manufacturer of parts as well, if we weren't.
If we weren't, and if they have.
Not finding anything or causing any work.
Yeah, that's a great point. I can definitely look into that.
Well, it'd be harder to tear up some stainless than it wouldn't be price.
Can we have them just quote it out and see what stainless would cost, if you can find anything, approve this, and then maybe you can come back to this.
I can, I can.
I wouldn't want to do that.
Well, if everybody's agreement to do that, have a check on that. Are you satisfied with the plastic?
I don't know. I mean, it only lasted like four or five years. I think when you find something lasts a little bit longer, you know, if we're going to spend the money, we might as well spend the money one time instead of five years from now spending it again, when it's double the cost of it.
I agree.
We might as well check on the stainless.
Okay, I will check on the stainless. I will look both for one manufacturer, design, and build, and also see what it would, what it would require for us to have one, fabricate one for us. And then, I can come back to council in the near future and tell you what I found.
Which fund does that come out of?
Special Parks and Recreation. We've got, we spent about, I think we spent about 90 on those benches and shade structures. We have 125,000 budget in that fund. So, depending on how much the metal one will cost, we may, we may have to do part out of this fund and part out of the general fund, but it shouldn't be an issue.
We've got, we've got a gentleman that does a lot of welding for us and fabricating. Just lives just not down, not too far from here. I'll look at the factory. If they don't have one, I'll talk to him, and if he can't do it, I'll look at some other options. We'll bring it back to council when I get some more information. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is item H.3. This is the R2 zoning district modification. So, quick background, on March 11, 2019, the planning commission approved that many of the R2 zoning classification allow for smaller lot sizes, reduced bulk regulations. On March 18, 2019, the city council approved these changes. Continue to review the subdivision regulations have shown that R2 allows for single-family detached housing to have six-foot side yard setbacks, while single-family attached duplexes must have 10-foot side yard setbacks. This is consignment when it comes to putting in duplexes and twin homes on lots that are zoned R2. So, we were reviewing this, and so, this requirement impedes a potential design layout for duplexes and twin homes on Goddard. In Goddard, it proportionally limits two-family developments over single-family. The revised regulations allow for any acceptable principal use to have the same side yard setbacks, the same lot requirements. The planning commission approved the R2 zoning modification on February 14, 2022. The city council is considering approving the changes to the R2 to family residential district classification. There are five parts, permitted uses, conditional and special uses, lot size requirements, bulk regulations, and use limitations. Green means it's been added. Red with a slash means it's been removed, and black it has stayed the same. Feel free to interrupt me at any time and ask additional questions. But basically, this saying for permitted uses, any permitted use allowed in the R1A and R1B residential districts except residential design manufactured homes. So, this was a self-referencing. It's, it referenced a previous zoning classification for acceptable uses, and so, I wanted to kind of remove that reference. I wanted it to be kind of laid out specifically, so I put all the acceptable uses under permitted uses, so that way you don't have to turn to Article 4, 4R2, and then switch back to Article 1A to see what kind of permitted uses are allowed. I laid it all out, so everything that's a layout here is the same that's a layout in R1A and R1B, except R1A and R1B has limitations on square footage for a building where R2 does not. Special uses, so I moved special uses, and I put conditional uses under here. The big difference between special uses and conditional uses is that special uses have to be reviewed by planning commission and city council, or conditional uses only have to be reviewed by planning commission. So, this is just one way of helping to streamline the entitlement process. If you felt like that was something that you wanted to actually be involved in, see in principal uses. For zoning classifications, when it came to R2 zoning classification, then we could keep that in there. Most of the zoning classifications don't actually have special uses specifically when it comes to types of permitted uses, or they typically have a conditional use, but that's just something to take into consideration if you're okay with that. Lot size requirements, so minimum lot area, dwellings permitted by Section 4102A1, 6,000 square feet. We have a single-family attached and two-family, so this is staying the same. All other principal uses are being switched to 5,000 square feet. Minimum lot width with a single-family attachment is staying the same at 35 feet, and we're saying all other principal uses will be 50 feet. Minimum lot depth stays the same. So, basically, this is referencing, once again, Section 4102A1, which is the R1A and the R1B, and it's saying that those are acceptable uses, and we're just simply saying that anything that's an acceptable use under principal uses will have 3,500 for single-family attached and two-family, and all principal uses being single-family detached, which are basically the only type of uses that are allowed, traditional, single-family detached. Two-family attached and duplexes are allowed in R2. So, if it's a single-family, it's going to be 5,000 square feet, 50 feet, with 100-foot lot depth. If it's a twin home or duplex, it's going to be 3,500 as a minimum with 35 feet and 100 foot for the lot depth. And this is where it talks about minimum side yards, and so, we left the yard requirements the same. This has to deal with if you're on a corner lot, setback requirements for corner lots. We kept that the same, minimum structure high, or maximum structure height, 35 feet, we left that the same. Instead of having this text that says, hey, if it's a dwelling unit that's attached, it has to have 10 feet. If it's a single-family detached, it can be 6 feet. We said simply all principal uses are 6 feet. The rear yard stays the same, and the maximum lot coverage stays the same. So, if it's considered an acceptable use, the bulk regulations cover all acceptable uses, instead of delineating between a duplex and a single-family detached, it's saying if it's an acceptable use, they all have the same setbacks. Use limitations, no outdoor storage shall be permitted by defined by Section 2-102. There's no changes here. This is just being kept as is. Small publication cost. Legally, it's approved as a form. It is recommended that the city council, one, waive the reading of the ordinance with voice, and, two, approve the zoning text amendment for R2 with voice and a roll call. Open to questions, comments, changes, thoughts?
Motion, waive the reading?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Motion to approve the zoning text amendment for R2.
Second.
Second by Michael. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lehman?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
Lib. Ordinance 20, or, excuse me, 895.
Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor and Council, item H4 is 2022, 2022 Street Maintenance Bid Award. Best practices indicates that a street pavement preservation application should occur every five years on each city roadway. In 2011, the city council adopted a Goddard pavement rehabilitation plan with the goal of rehabbing each of the streets on a five-year cycle. This is the plan. It shows, shows from the beginning, three years. You do crack seals, slurry still, or penetrators, just to keep the asphalt good, and as you go on, the level of your work goes up, all the way up to 40 years in rehabilitation. The 2022 street maintenance proposal includes four projects addressing various street concerns throughout the city. RFPs were hand-delivered to eight prospective bidders. Multiple companies returned bids with APEC Kansas, Hall &amp; Paving, and Op Concrete providing the best bids for paving. City staff also received a quote from Noah Construction for repair of the failing culverts on 23 Third Street adjacent to the new trails in development. The four projects we are proposing are, one, North Cedar Street, and that would address Cedar Street from Kellogg down to Fourth Street. This is Pizza Hut, and what the new Scooters is. And what we're proposing there is to rehab the street by milling the top two inches off of it, repairing any deterioration that extends into the base, and overlaying it with two inches of new asphalt. The best bidder on that job was APEC Kansas for $80,597. The second project is the 21st Street, Third Street Culvert. Some of you may have heard about this. Earlier in the summer, those culverts, bottom of them rusted out and they failed. We, Noah was gracious enough to loan us some big steel plates, move them out there and put it over to keep the road safe. And they've been in that condition while Harland did his engineering for the new culverts, to determine what would work and what the best way to put those in was. And then, we got our quotes. That repair will include replacing the existing metal culverts with concrete, removing and removing or replacing 140 feet of the road. There was a pothole just to the east of those culverts that we've been fighting on and off for years, putting a lot of cold patch in. And I thought if we're going to do any, any repair there, let's just cut that out, get rid of that, and we'll have new asphalt. For 140 feet, it's about, about 80 feet on one side, well, about 70 feet on one side of the culvert and the remainder, on the east side of the culvert and the remainder on the west. Noah Construction was the only person we reached out to for bids on that, because they were gracious enough on short notice to bring those plates. They do an excellent job in their local business. APEC Kansas was the best bidder for the asphalt work. Total project cost for that project is $93,312. Stop me if, and here's a map of the location. There's a trail, 215th, 23rd. This is where the trails and development will go, and this is where the culvert should fail. That's a blow-up. This is obviously before they failed, and we had our plates on top of them. Stop me on any of these individual items if you have questions, please. Item three is the alley behind City Hall here. This project removes, includes replacing the damaged, removing the damaged concrete and replacing with a reinforced concrete. We're looking at approximately 200 feet of the alley from just the south half, south side of City Hall all the way to First Street. And what that would do is, right here, you see a lot of cold patch. When that is removed, that's where trash trucks have turned, our police vehicles have moved in out, and it has become, it's a deep, big, massive pothole out there. Hard on front ends, hard on vehicles. We, like I said, we have a patch with about a half a pallet of cold patch there. Another goal of this is to, they're going to pour the, the alley with a slight concave to the center, so the water, instead of flowing east onto the neighbor's property, it'll flow down the middle of the road and into the gutter on this trail, on First Street. This will include ADA compliant sidewalk entrances on the end of that alley on First Street where the sidewalk currently is. The best bidder for this project was Op Concrete for $26,050. Any questions on that one? The final project I'm bringing forward. The final project I'm bringing for you is utility cuts. These are places around town. There are several locations where we would have to repair, make a water repair and cut the asphalt off the street, and we'd go back and back, fill it with AB three, or in some instance, it's cold patch. Um, they need to be replaced with asphalt so that we don't get more water under the road and, and tear up the base. There are several of these all over town. We haven't had any of these recently because we have gone to boring under the road. If the main is on one side and we need to replace a service line, we've got a good partnership with Noaw and they'll come out and bore it for us cheaper than we can cut the road and repair it. And then we don't have that invasive, um, procedure on the road. So, here's where the various locations are throughout town. The best bidder for those was APEC Kansas for fifteen thousand dollars. The twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two budget contains, right now, contains over a hundred thousand dollars for street maintenance project. The remainder of the funding, should this be approved, will come from capital improvement. As you can see, here's a little breakdown of the, the project, the best bid and the cost. Total cost for the projects are, is two hundred fourteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars. I've added a fifteen percent contingency just in case they get the asphalt off, they find something interesting that needs to be repaired, we're not, we're, we're prepared for it financially, for a total cost of two hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred three dollars. As I said before, the cost of two hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred three dollars, hundred seven five seventy-eight will be allocated to Special Highway Street Fund. The remaining one thirty-nine, six twenty-five will be allocated to Capital Improvement Fund. Any questions? Comments?
Can I comment on the funding?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I don't know if you remember or not, but I talked about it a little bit when we did the street budget. Last year, our, um, street maintenance expenditure, we did not get those invoices until after the first of this year. So, for the work that was done last year. So, we had to pay that when it was, when it came due, which was in this year, which means that, it will go, it will affect this year's budget. So, what I did was, I transferred the remainder of what we would have spent of that amount, basically, from, uh, last year. I transferred that at the end of twenty-twenty-two into the Capital Improvement Fund. So, we have that funding available in Capital Improvement to pay for the entire street maintenance for this year. So, that's why he's got to split between two different points.
Legal, approved as a form. Recommendation is awarded twenty-twenty-two street maintenance projects in the amount of two hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred three dollars.
I'd like to make a motion to approve H. four.
Second.
Motion on the second. Any discussion? On favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both?
Mayor and Council. Um, item H. five is a Landia mixer purchase for the wastewater treatment facility. Um, the city's wastewater plant has four mixers that aid in the transmission, treatment of influent by maintaining basin flow and holding the solvents in suspension. Um, proper mixing within the anaustic and aerobic zones can help ensure lower effi- affluent nutrients and improve treatment efficiency. The mixers currently use have been in operation since the plant was built, and one is currently experiencing seal failure. The failed mixer would be replaced with a new Landia POP I two fifty submersible mixer. The Landias offer a unique propeller and hub sealing system that doesn't have seals, so we won't have seal issues in the future. And it's a, it's just, uh, the Landia designs are just head and shoulders above. We've seen it with their chopper pumps and with their mixers, they're just a lot different design. And they, they state that they outlast standard mixers, and if they're like their pumps, I believe that. If this is approved, a Landia representative will come on site to set up and train staff in how to, um, maintain and operate the mixer, and has a one-year warranty. We chose to go with this mixer. One of the reasons is because this is a brand-new mixer. We're getting it five thousand dollars cheaper because they unboxed it and put it on a table at a trade show. So, we're saving five grand because they unboxed it. Um, it still has the same warranty. It's brand-new. It's never been in the basement, and it's never been in any influent, and it's never been any more. It's just we have a, we have a sales guy who likes us. Um, that's a picture of the mixer. Not too exciting. It's a big, um, sealed-up motor with a big stainless steel. The impeller's about, propeller's about that big, and it's a pretty big, heavy piece.
Wow.
It's a big, heavy motor. I don't know how many horse that motor is. If I guess, I'd say thirty or forty horse. What do you think, Harland?
Well, I don't know. That's the first I've seen of one.
Okay, well, so they're, they're, it's a pretty big, heavy piece.
We can't just run the cappellus and get about ten.
Outboard.
It really kind of does what an outboard does, eh? It slides down a rail in that basin and it so propeller turns and it keeps things mixing, just as the name states. Um, we're requesting spending approval of nineteen thousand for the mixer, for the purchase of new Landia POP two fifty submersible mixer. That amount is budgeted and will allocate a hundred percent to the sewer reserve fund. This is not correct. I updated that.
That current fund balance is two hundred fourteen thousand plus a hundred thousand that's gonna be transferred in, in the, when I finish the July balancing.
So, my apology, I, Brian caught that little error I made there and I updated, but it must have been in the mix and didn't get into that chart, I think. So, my apology. Legal approved as a form. Any additional questions?
All right, is everybody satisfied with that and want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Want to make a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. Any discussion? On favor, aye?
Aye.
Honorable Mayor and Council, uh, just some slides for our, our development updates. Uh, you can see the Starvón site is, uh, is moving along. Uh, we've got the Hampton Inn signage is up. They've put, uh, looks like a soffit on the north side. And, uh, just to kind of reiterate, uh, this portion here is the health club. This would be the childcare facility. The elevated roof there is the water park and the, uh, concave roof here is the, uh, swimming pool. Uh, ball field facility, as you can tell, uh, they still have, uh, two fields underway and they've began, work on that as well as the, uh, the concession and, uh, announcing areas. Arbor Creek Phase Two, which was a small phase, you can see that there's four homes currently under construction in, uh, Phase Two. Progress on the clubhouse with, uh, only three empty lots and Elkeridge remaining, uh, for construction. Cloverleaf, you can tell, uh, looking to the west, this is the third and final phase with second phase being on the left-hand side of the right-hand photo. And, uh, progress looking back to the northeast as well. So, uh, that should be coming along very, very soon. Rusty Creek has, uh, six houses up, more in progress. And they've had some, some weather issues. Uh, also want to point out that the, uh, new vehicle that was authorized has arrived and, uh, I'll let, uh, Brooke, if you want to fill them in on kind of what the timeline is for getting it lit and upgraded so that it can be fully, fully fielded.
Is that Dana White or is that Gary?
I say, yeah, that's, that's Gary up there. He's proud of his, his new truck. He had to ride the older, I haven't for so long that I have designated. He is the only public works employee that pretty much has his own designated truck, and so he's very happy to have the new one. Um, I took it over Friday. It was delivered Friday, took it over to Norris. Unfortunately, the new decal's weren't, haven't been delivered to them yet, so they weren't able to put them on. We'll have the decals put on as soon as they're delivered. We've got a truck going in the body shop. It got some damage. Um, so we will probably hold off and send this to Shopper Lights and plow and spreader until that ends up at the shop. So, by the end of August, we should have that one up fully, fully operational with the lights and everything. We will still use it without the lights, but, but we're happy to have it and, um, we're lucky to get it, quite frankly, the way the mar- the way the automobile market is right now. Say again?
It's a one-time?
It's a one-time, um, thirty-five hundred diesel, four-wheel drive.
And, uh, they're also, just while we're on the subject, I, you'll notice they are in the process of preparing for school, so you'll notice the crosswalks and stop thresholds have been in our process of being painted this week. Uh, just to remind you, on August tenth, then we'll put some stuff out on social media and reiterate that, uh, we're only capturing the new construction and keeping, um, existing, uh, property taxes for residential and commercial properties, uh, flat at the prior year level. Uh, but those notices will be mailed out on August tenth with our special meeting on the twenty-second.
The April published notice, a week from Thursday to Thursday, I got sent to them today, so.
We'll have a, just a receiving file for the quarterly reports, and we'll have a replat for Arbor Creek. We'll have the annual adoption of the standard traffic ordinance and uniform code of public offenses, which incorporates the legislative changes in the past, legislative session and includes, uh, local exclusions where allowed. And then we'll have a extensive discussion on, uh, growth-related items. We've got the city of Wichita, um, looking to cross one sixty-seventh, and so we'll need to have some serious discussions on how we'll want to safeguard, uh, if at all, what, what will our growth plans be? And so, uh, with that, obviously comes, uh, service extensions and, and how do you pay for that? So, uh, next week will be, uh, kind of some big picture, but it eat real easy to get into the weeds. But we'll have that as well. Uh, are there any questions for, uh, city staff or myself? Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to covering body comments. Where are you headed?
Well, I just want to remind everybody, today's, tomorrow's a big day. It's August second. It's election day, so I want to remind everybody to get out and vote. It's not only you're right, it's your duty to do it. Mom always used to say, if you don't vote, you don't complain. Get out there and vote.
Sarah?
Um, who on Main Street or in front of businesses is in charge of the sidewalk maintenance? Is it the business owner or is that something the city, like, basically, there's just?
I think technically it's, technically, it's the property owners. We put them in charge, but I think we wanted to be, as a city, we wanted to be more, we have more oversight over the sidewalks. That way, if somebody, because if we allow property owners to do it, even though the code does say the property is required for it, you might have shoddy work being done, or they'll contract, uh, excuse me, they'll contract somebody and they may not do it up to the code.
Well, I'm not talking about, like, repairing or anything. I'm talking about all the weeds that are growing along Main Street that made street.
Property owners. So, property owners, regardless if it's commercial or residential, have to mow up to the center line of any street alley or right-of-way. And so, that, you know, corner lots, if anything that's in the alley, that's, all of those are considered center lines. So, if you imagine a property is sitting on a lot and you have streets and alleys, that, that mowing requirement goes all the way out like a big box around, past their own property line. And so, that's why we send out letters to everybody, um, for mowing grass. For example, in residential districts, you see the sidewalk typically is in the right-of-way, and then past the sidewalk's private property, but that property owner is still required to mow all the way up to the curb, and that's, there is no difference between that and commercial districts.
I mean, I just, I just noticed that all the weeds along Main Street are, it's just, are business downtown.
They've gotten really bad.
Main Street's bad, even in front of City Hall.
Well, that's, since you mentioned it, because I noticed that too and actually literally put it on tomorrow's daily for Sean to clear the weeds off in front of City Hall and the penny center.
Okay.
So, in, in the past, we have actually taken we can, we can do that.
Steps of, of, of weedy, applying a herbicide to the cracks and
The full street, yeah.
And we, and we can do that. We don't have problem with that.
Yeah, I just noticed it when I was driving in today. I'm like.
I mean, we, I know typically it is their, their responsibility, but no one wants to do it.
Right. I don't want to do it at my house either.
This isn't the time of year, like, all of a sudden, they'll pop up on the street.
It's bad. I mean, yards are terrible, right? It's just, it's bad.
Okay, we can, we'll make it, make it happen.
Thank you.
Well, the PD and fire and rescue had a great little, uh, program over at the bank the weekend.
Yeah, we took part in the First National Bank's safety fair. The, uh, sprinkles were a little dimensioned to the crowd, but it was, uh, it was nice. We helped a few people get their car seats controlled.
Well, Ellie put sprinkles on her, on her shaved ice.
Yes, yeah.
And then amazingly, the three shaved ice in the backseat did not make it onto the seats. So, that was great, but it was, they were so thrilled. They're like, heck, yeah. And she's got this bright red one. It's not gonna go well.
Look at you. Do you have anything more?
Nah, not at all, but I appreciate everybody doing a good job. Thank you.
Well, I'm sort of, sort of excited about seeing the Genesis opening up next weekend. I think that'll, that'll be a big relief to a lot of people to start seeing things opening up over there and coming into fruition after almost twenty years of anticipation. As I can remember, when I was first, uh, first mentioned back, it was back in ninety, ninety-nine or ninety-eight or something, where the first idea came along, where there's gonna be dinosaurs and everything else in there, and and that went over and then three different takes and finally ended up what it is today. So, I'd be happy to see it all play out and make our city more desirable to come to and do business in. And I thank everybody for the efforts they put out to make our city a desirable place to live. And I guess that's all I have. Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion on the second. Any discussion? On favor, aye?
Aye.